We'll call our meeting to order. First item is roll call. Diane?
Mayor Skug?
Present.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Grossman?
I'm here.
Councilmember Marshall?
Here.
Councilmember Nye?
Present.
Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
And Councilmember Mallory?
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. Item number three, presentation pool usage report.
Okay, got it. Mayor, council members, I am Robert Cairn. I'm the aquatics coordinator over at Mountain Valley Splash. Wanted to stop by and just give you guys a usage update for the pool. Obviously, summer is definitely in full swing with the heat and all the fun times that come along with it, so I just wanted to give you an update on what we were doing over there. We offer a number of different programs at our pool facility. Obviously, we have open swim, which is always very well attended by all the public, as well as our aqua aerobics, lap swim, swimming lesson, therapy swim, as well as our family night and recreational swim team. So, we offer quite a bit to the public at large, and this year, we've actually seen quite a few increases in some of our larger programs. Of those programs, our swimming lessons, in our first session only, we had 266 kids signed up to go ahead and be in our group setting for swimming lessons, which is always something I love to see because that's preventative and we want to make sure everybody learns how to swim. That's been the best since I've been here over the course of the last six years, so love to go ahead and see that. Open swim from 1:00 to 4:30, Monday through Sunday, we've seen a large jump in that area as well. And our family night, which is conducted Tuesdays and Thursdays from 7:00 to 8:05, has also seen a very nice increase. From the graph, you can go ahead and see on our 2015 season, and all these numbers are just based on the first 19 days for both seasons because we've only made it to the 19th day this year. We've seen a 52% increase in our open swim time, which equates to just about 83 additional people per day over last year in this season. And then for our family night, we had a huge jump, which is awesome. We love to see the families come out there on Tuesdays and Thursdays, enjoy the pool with the little ones after work, cool off, anything like that. So, that increase is always great to see as well. And then back to our swimming lessons, we're up 23% just in our session one and session two within this season. So, like I said, love to see that, love to see the kids get in there and learn how to swim. This is a participation trend over the course of the last three years. You can see from 2013 season, 2014, and 2015, all of our large programs that see a lot of usage have gone up over the course of the last three years. So, the pool is definitely getting used. We're there to go ahead and make sure that the public can come in, have a good time, get a workout in, or just enjoy the pool leisurely. So, we'd love to be able to offer that. And a few important dates that we have coming up, on June 25th will be our session three swimming lesson signups. Want to make sure people know about that. July 8th will be our session four swimming lesson signups. And anybody who hasn't jumped onto our recreational swim team that is between the ages of 6 and 17 can go ahead and sign up for our second session beginning on July 4th. And all of this information is contained on our website at pvaz.net. Other than that, if you have any questions, I would love to answer them at this time.
Okay, questions, anyone?
Just for the public out there watching, is there a fee to use the pool?
There is, yes ma'am. All of our fees are based on age groups. From 5 and under, it's a dollar. 6 to 17 is $2. 18 to 54 will be $3, and 55 plus is $2.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Robert, anything else?
That's all I got for you at this time, Mayor. We'll continue getting people into the water to have a good time all through the summer. Obviously, this weekend's looking hot, as well as next week as well, so come over and enjoy some time in Mountain Valley Splash Pool.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we move on into number five, discussion roadway access to Paquito... I'm sorry, four, public hearing. And that's on Public Transit Services. No, I'm going to declare the hearing open.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to open this public hearing for Upstart Transit Services. I know we do have some advocates here in the audience that would like to come speak to you after I give a little intro and some background, so I'd like to make note, I'd like to have them come up, and I know they'd like to speak. But let's talk about what got us today to talk about Upstart Transit Services. I think council may recall that we always work with our Central Yavapai Metropolitan Planning Organization, CYMPO as we call them. And there are federal transit administration dollars that come to this region through the CYMPO that you can actually do studies and actually fund transit systems with those dollars that come to the Metropolitan Planning Organization. So, back in 2007, there was a need study done to look at regional transit. That was followed up in 2009 with an implementation plan, actually for a regional transit system for this region. But what happened, 2009, the study got done, and of course, we're all well aware that was probably right at the height of the downturn. Well, that particular study, any implementation to have transit start from where it's at today, really just kind of fizzled out and sat on the shelf. Council may recall here in October of 14, transit advocate, a lot of need here in Prescott Valley, expressing the need, we'd like to pull that study off the shelf and move regional transit forward. So, you sent a letter in October 2004 to the Central Yavapai Metropolitan Planning Executive Board to say, let's use some of that FTA planning dollars to further transit and actually put it in place. Well, we looked at a regional study, but we queried the other member agencies of the MPO, and no one really wanted to participate. So, the decision was made, we're going to move forward as Prescott Valley so we can do a study, get our transit advocates that have told you, we want transit services here, enhance from what they are today. And so, we commissioned a study. So, keep in mind, all these studies have been paid for transit FTA dollars that come to this region. So, it's the federal dollars that come to this region. So, got the direction to go hire a consultant, let's move that study forward from 2009, dust it off, so to speak, and make it germane to Prescott Valley, but always understanding, whatever we do for Prescott Valley, we'd like to be able to expand it regionally and grow a system if there ever is the need or want by the public. So, study got going here in past August of 15. It's been about a year. And the study got started in August, and we hired a qualified transit consultant. And we did have a couple of meetings throughout, had a long timeline, about six months. We had a couple checkpoints with public meetings so the consultant could explain the data, get feedback from the public, and help shape that study. And what I have here in my hands is actually that final report that was done here in March. So, out of that particular report, what's always been the key thing to keep in mind is that we need, this is a new service, and we need a dedicated funding source. So, out of that study came a particular service and the recommendation to use property tax in order to move that particular... If we needed a funding source for that service, then that would be through a property tax. Of course, property tax would require a public vote, and as part of the study, what's been proposed is that we would go to a vote of the public, if council so desires, and with the support of the transit advocate community here in Prescott Valley, to do that particular vote in May of 17. Vote, public votes like this for property tax always have to take place in May. So, that's really kind of the framework of what we're talking about in order for this Upstart Transit Services. I think council's aware, you've got the NACOG transit vouchers, so we have some nominal, and you just awarded that contract in for next fiscal year to a funding level of $50,000. But really, what we have in place now is the transit advocates are here to tell you what they think the need is, and we've got a funding source they would like to recommend moving forward with. So, that's some of the background and highlights, and everything's contained in this public study that was done, and a synopsis of what that particular funding source would be, how it's done, and how it would be operated. At that time, Mayor, that's a lot of the background, what got us here tonight.
Been down that road a few times.
Yeah, I just wanted to give you a rehash, Mayor. It's been a long timeline, but that got us here today, probably for the public's benefit too. But I think a lot of you recall that timeline.
Any comments from the council, anyone?
Not yet.
Public, any comments? Anyone care to comment?
I think David Segler's ready to come up.
David, welcome. Good to see you.
Mr. Mayor and council, thank you very much for having me today and allowing me a chance to speak. I am here today as the executive director of the New Horizons Disability Empowerment Center. We are a nonprofit 501(c)(3) whose very existence is mandated by the Americans with Disabilities Act. We are the voice for the disabled. And here in this community, as we started to discuss transit, that was a big deal for us as an advocate for people with disabilities. I also own a restaurant in Prescott, and as a small business owner, whose 3/4 of my staff lives in Prescott Valley, in fact, five of my eight staff live in Prescott Valley. One of them owns a car. Four of them live together, but she ain't driving him every day. It's an issue as an employer that creates an unstable working space. So, I'm an advocate for transit on many, many different sides. Last time we came before you, you had asked us to show some public support, to bring something like some petitions to the council, showing that the public is in support of seeing this item on the ballot. I was asked to collect 500 signatures, we have 516. We are not a volunteer-based agency that has a whole bunch of folks running around who want to do petitions or that sort of work, so we relied heavily on some members from St. Vincent de Paul, one community volunteer, and two off-time staff people to collect a few signatures. We did not give this a great deal of effort, nor did we stray far from our homes. And in very little time, we collected 516 signatures. 12 of the 16 are members of the American Legion Post 140 and the American Legion Riders who do not reside here but felt that they had a stake in what was going on here as a member of the local clubs. And they demanded the opportunity to sign the signature page. So, we made sure we got more than the 500. These represent not just people with disabilities, but people in the community who recognize that transit is critical for commerce, for medical care, for young families, and the elderly. As far as the disabled people are concerned, it is the difference between isolation and independence. Without mobility, you cannot get to a job, or the doctor, or to visit your Aunt Sally. And without those opportunities, life becomes a whole lot less than what we're looking for. So, we'd like to submit these petitions. Now, we weren't requested to get registered voters, these are just residents, and I wanted to make that clear too. Just wanted to bring them up. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Questions, anyone?
No.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, David. Anyone else care to comment? Row or con? Go ahead, David.
There are several people who came out to just show their support, and a few people who could not be here, including the executive director of Goodwill and the American Legion Post 140 commander, Sean Kruener. But some people are here specifically for that purpose. Could you maybe stand up, if you're willing? Thank you very much.
Mr. Romley, did you have anything to add?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. As an ex-politician, I never miss an opportunity to get up in front of you and speak.
Politicians and professionals appreciate...
As all of you know, we are currently running a transit system into Prescott Valley. We only have three stops, and we have a lot of diversions. However, what was presented to you by Suzanne O'Neill was a more broad transit proposal that would hit your entire town. Because our grant from the FTA is a rural grant, and you are urban, we cannot service the town like we would really like to. The thing of it is, is that there is money through simple that can substantiate the majority of the costs, and what we're looking for is the match money. If it proceeds, I know, right now, I know the council probably is going to want to stay neutral on this till they get more information with regards to it, but we do know that there's a lot of people that are leaving Prescott and coming into Prescott Valley, and vice versa. And they want that means of transportation. I know a lot of people will talk about leakage, but the thing of it is, they're going to find one way or the other to get to where they want to go. And if they can do it safely, especially with the disabled, or in wheelchairs, or something of that nature, like all of our buses have, that's the best way to go. I really highly recommend... It's a long process. I don't think the first buses, if it did pass, would even enter your streets until probably 2019, because it takes a little while to get the buses built and everything. We are progressing. We started with two buses, we are waiting delivery of our fifth bus. So, the need is there, the people are using it. One of the other things too, that I wanted to mention was, you need to be aware of the economic development that these people bring into your community, whether they're coming from outside to the inside, or whether they're keeping it right here. We did, for our last audit, we found out that we have already spent over $2 million. YRT has spent that kind of money. A national survey says that for every dollar spent on a transit system, $4 comes back to the community. I know if I walked up and handed Mayor Skug an $8 million check, I would get his attention, plus all the rest of you.
Do it, okay?
But it comes in and drabs through sales tax and through all kinds of things. There are a lot of people in the tri-city, quad-city area that are getting to the age to where they just can't get out, and they're moving back to the valley. That's a lose-lose situation. If this thing passes and you get a bus system, people are looking at it and saying, well, it doesn't go where I live and all this. It takes time. NAPDA, prime example, and Flagstaff, started with one bus 25 years ago, and now look what they're doing. Of course, they have a college, but you have one here too. And the colleges are very interesting. Heavy stock for us is Yavapai College. So, anyway, give it a fair assessment and do what you have to do. But I think your constituents would really like it, and for $30 a year and a tax increase, I don't think that's a lot.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Anyone else care to comment? Thank you, Rick. Any other comments? Council?
No.
Mike? No comment?
No, I just wanted to thank those that are here tonight and appreciate the signatures. I think it's at least something that we can look at and say, well, we have 500 registered voters who approve of something like this. And it's just something that obviously, we're going to have the community answer the question eventually, whether or not we'll have a transit system here. So, we appreciate that, David, for your signatures and your help.
Thank you, Mike. Marty?
The only thing I have to say is, there's a lot that needs to be considered, and this is not going to be a quick, easy decision by any of us, but all information will be looked at, and we'll make the decision that we feel is proper.
I think there's one issue of clarification that I would like to make. But before I make that, I want to thank all of you who have worked so hard in your hearts and are all in the right place, and I understand all of that. This is not a council-driven initiative. This is a citizen and social agency service providers-driven initiative. And of course, you heard before, we're staying neutral because we have to hear all the voices.
Thank you, Laura. Vice Mayor?
Well, Councilwoman Nye pretty much covered it. My concern has always been that we're not looking to increase a tax, we're looking at a brand-new tax, and that's going to take the vote of the citizens of Prescott Valley. That's not up to us. Again, this is not a council-driven event. This is a citizen-driven event. Either the citizens will vote to tax themselves, or they won't. The vote isn't up to me. How I personally vote should sway no one. The only thing I would show concern about is that we may start off the first year with a $30 tax. Taxes have a way of increasing. Taxes have a way of getting out of hand. What, maybe $30 this year, maybe $300 in 10 years? I would caution everybody about that. There needs to be some control over how this is done. I know there has to be a lot more discussion done before this ever comes to the point of taking it to a vote, but I have concerns about that. And I think that we will, we being the citizens of this town, will look at that very carefully in the time leading up to a vote, if that's where it goes. And I think there'll be a lot more information made available to us, at least I certainly hope so, because I wouldn't be ready to vote today on that personally.
Laura, you want to use a microphone?
Well, I don't think we know today that $30 is an accurate figure. I think we need more information on that. I know that's the number that was told to us, and I'm sure that's what we believed at the time to be accurate, but there's a lot that goes into that, and we would have to see. But between now and the time in May of 2017 that this would go to a vote, there's going to have to be a lot more information put out. We did request that we wanted to see some indication of the willingness of the citizens of Prescott Valley to take this to a vote, and that's why we have those signatures tonight. There obviously is a willingness to at least take it to a vote. And one of the options that the council has is to send it directly to a vote, and that's why the signatures are here. The other option is that we can force an initiative to happen, in which case, you go out and get registered voters to sign, and if 1,200 registered voters decide that they want to take it to an initiative, then it automatically goes to a vote. But we had said that, as a show of good faith, if we had a number of signatures show up here, we would consider taking it directly to a vote. But that's something we have to look at. There's still a lot of missing information, and I for one would like to see the rest of that information.
Thank you, Rick. Larry, did you have a comment?
I do have a comment, and that is that a decision will have to be made by January as to whether or not this would be put on the ballot in May. So, there is time between now and when a decision would be made, whether or not you want to have an election in May. In addition to that, there is cost associated with that. And the cost associated with that is roughly, and I say roughly because we don't have the numbers from Yavapai County, $40,000 to $50,000 for a mail-in election. If it has a polling place component, it's believed that that will jump to about $90,000 for an election like that. So, you have time to go ahead and make a decision on whether to call for the election, which would give the transit advocates more opportunity to grow support if they so chose. So, we'll be looking for direction from you, but if you want to give the transit advocate community more time to gather support, certainly you have that luxury, the luxury of time.
Thank you, Larry. Mayor, any comments?
No, Mayor. I would like to see it be a voter initiative. I would like to see the vote definitely be out there, and the people would get the registered voters and give it all to the people to make all the decisions, so that it seems to be a very clear, knowledgeable situation.
Good, thank you. Steve, you got a comment?
Well, I agree with Mary. I think it needs to be actual registered voters, because there was another initiative that the citizens tried to bring about that would stop us from raising taxes, that everything would have to go to the vote of the people. And they got 1,200 and something signatures, but it didn't make the ballot because they weren't all registered voters. So, I mean, if we're going to give this a shot, we should give that a shot as well. That way, we're at least getting more bang for our buck with the election.
Okay. Larry, if we were to require a voter initiative, how soon would you have to know about that?
Setting the time, calling for the vote is going to be a similar timeframe. So, if you would direct staff to work with the advocates suggesting that it be the formal initiative process, there are timelines associated with that that Diane would be better able to address than myself.
Mayor and council, what I would say about that, if you're looking at the community members, voter, registered voters carrying an initiative petition to go forward with this action, which I'm getting the impression, am I understanding you correctly, that's what you're talking about, then that would have to be something that would have to be turned in to my office no later than 120 days prior to the election. That's a good, it's quite a ways in advance, just like the one we just had a few weeks ago. And I'd have to recalculate based on the new figures and everything as to how many signatures they need, but it'd probably be in the same ballpark. But anyway, you'd have to plan for them to have that petition turned in to me fairly early in order to get that ready for the ballot.
Okay, thank you, Diane. Any other comments?
You know, a very good point has been brought up about the registered voters, because that is a standard. Do you even have, off the top of your head, feel about what percentage of your 516 signatures would be registered voters?
I could not fathom a guess, as I personally only had two sheets filled out. A lot of other people were getting them filled out, and I have no idea. I could not venture a satisfactory guess.
Because we're creating the potential for entirely new funding source, and I think we have to be very cautious, and I totally agree with Councilman Marshall about his point. Totally agree.
As a business owner, as a nonprofit manager, as a voting Republican, I agree. Before we started tax, we got to be real careful. And Vice Mayor, the comments about it growing over time are very real and need to be controlled. The understanding was, because of the group that's an advocate for this, all of the different groups that are advocates for this, we're all groups that are basically nonprofits working with people with very low-income disabilities and other issues like that, that if we did something like this to show that it's out there, that we could avoid trying to expend valuable resources on doing a voter initiative. And I mean, to collect 1,200 registered voters anywhere would take a great deal of staff time and resources, which right now, we don't have. We don't run a margin that's got room for those things. Now, as a citizen advocate, we'll gather some folks up, we'll do what we have to do because this is a serious issue, and it has to be decided by the voters. And that's why we collected the 500, so we could skip the voter initiative part of it and get it on the ballot so that the voters can decide, not so that the voters can decide twice. We'd like to invest our resources into coming up with the answers for Vice Mayor's questions and council and population's questions about growth and potential and limiting all of those things. That was going to take some time too, to get an educated question on the ballot and have those people who are skeptical have the information in front of them that they actually trust. We'd like to make that happen, but we can't do all things at all times. We're just poor nonprofits, isn't the line I like to use, but we don't have resources for that. And the town is giving away a million dollars a year right now that could be bringing it in right now. And anyway, I answered your question. I'm sorry for using the podium.
Thank you, David.
Appreciate your honesty.
Vice Mayor, Rick?
Well, I think we're going to have to bring this before a regular meeting. I don't think we can make any decisions. I don't think we can make any decision about this tonight, can we?
We can't make a decision. Reed, you got a comment?
I do. From Kirk.
Great.
Kirk's a puppet master.
That's great.
You're using Kirk, Kirk for this?
I want to blame it on Kirk. I'm just kind of curious, ask you how many of the five hundred signatures you got were Prescott Valley citizens?
All of them. There's probably about nineteen or about sixty that weren't.
They were all from Prescott Valley?
All Prescott Valley.
And does anybody know what the loss is per rider on a mass transit system? Well, you're talking about increasing Prescott Valley property tax, which we currently don't have, so the citizens would all subsidize whoever rides on the transit system. Is that right? Okay, so if a hundred people rode on it, and there's forty, how many thousand people in Prescott Valley, forty-five, forty-six thousand?
Forty-five, yeah.
By-sense is forty-two, although we believe there's more than that.
Yeah. So all these people are going to subsidize...
You want to use the microphone, Reed?
I'm sorry. All these people are going to subsidize the few that do ride it. Basically, I'm against it, always have been. It's been brought up before, it's been shot down before. We're not a mass community that we need a lot of transportation. And the people that are here are here because they, this is the way they want to be. This is their transportation, they knew that when they got here. I don't want to subsidize your employees getting to your job. That's all.
Thank you, Reed.
I understand that. And my tax dollars benefit your job, too, but that's how I feel. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public here to comment? Kirk? Yes, sir, come on up.
Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Don Reen, and I live right about four blocks up that way. And I'm one of the two or three senior citizens...
Pull the microphone down just a little.
I'm one of the two or three senior citizens that live in the area, although I do have transportation. I drive the bus through here on Fridays, and I would say that most of the people I pick up do not have transportation. And that includes the people in wheelchairs, people with strollers, crutches, and they all appreciate our service. And if we've only got ten riders and everybody else is paying the taxes, well, I'm one that will pay the extra tax. And when I have talked to people about signing this petition, I tell them that it may increase their taxes about three dollars a month. I don't tell them thirty dollars or thirty-six dollars. But I also warn them that they know how government operates, so it may be more. But I just want to let you know that I'm one of the few people that perhaps is willing to pay that extra thirty-six or forty dollars a month, or thirty dollars a month, to help the senior citizens or those that don't have transportation get around our city and get out of the city, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Anyone else? If there's no further comment, council... I'm sorry. Oh, there, okay, Craig?
Hi, I'm Craig Arps. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'd just like to, something that was just said kind of gave me a thought. I think I made my position on the public transit clear, but if the citizens, the vast majority of them, are willing to pay an extra thirty, thirty-six dollars a month for a transit system to help out those people, and I think we have a lot of good people in town, and I think that would probably be the case. It sounds like an opening for a charity. I don't understand why the government has to force everyone to pay the tax if all the people are already willing to help. That's kind of my...
It wouldn't be the government forcing it, it'd be the people themselves.
Right, but it would be a tax, which means that people are forced to pay it. You don't get an option on a tax. It's not voluntary anymore, so.
Right. Okay, anyone else? If there is no further comment, then I would declare the public hearing closed, and we'll move on to number five, discussion roadway access to Paquito Valley land area. Norm? By the way, thanks all for your comments, we appreciate them. And keep on commenting, and keep on letting us know.
Mayor, council, this next item you have before you is in reference to a current private roadway called, or it's the access road into Paquito Valley. I'd like to give you a little background. Council, may we recall that several residents in the unincorporated area outside of the town limits came to you on the March, the last May twenty-six council meeting to express their concern over an existing private dirt roadway within the town limits that they use for access that they would like to see improved. So they did come and talk to you. We did at the May twenty-six meeting indicate to you that we did have a meeting with the county supervisor, Craig Brown, also supervisor Jack Smith, to talk about how we can get this solved. They were actually leading this particular effort to get this particular roadway improved. What's important to note is this particular dirt roadway access into Paquito Valley has been in place for many, many, many years. And over the time, it's been improved by the viewpoint subdivision from its dirt standards been in place forever. And then the Paquito Valley residents improved to a pavement standard the road within their limits. Well, what it left was that middle section. That, as you see in this particular exhibit up on top, that dirt section, it was about half mile of road. So as I mentioned, we had about old twenty-five to fifty residents show up that say that they would like to see this road improved, but the direction was that would be up to direction of the county. Well, we had a meeting with the county supervisor Brown and also the public work staff to talk about a solution. So I'm happy to report that the county has come forward with a solution to bring that road to a pavement standard with county dollars and improve the roadway, with the idea in mind that if they improve the roadway, the town would take it over for maintenance. The other thing about bringing that road section of roadway about half a mile up to pavement standard is you see the blue area there is actually a floodplain. They would actually install, at their cost, too, a low water crossing there. So altogether, that particular roadway, I just want to reiterate again that it would be using county dollars, one-hundred percent county dollars, to improve that particular roadway, that dirt section of roadway. So I'm happy to report, we've actually, anytime we do that particular, they pay for the roadway, and us taking over maintenance would require an intergovernmental agreement or IGA. We have received a draft of IGA, and the deal points are being discussed in order to consummate this particular deal if council so desires to approve the intergovernmental agreement or IGA. So what's on the table right now is that intergovernmental agreement's being looked at by staff, and we would like to present that to you with your direction at a later date when all the details get hashed out to basically put that deal in place. It would be one-hundred percent county dollars to improve the low water crossing and also bring it to a pavement standard. And what the town would do is agree to take it over for maintenance, because it is within the town incorporated limits. So timeline right now, the intergovernmental agreement's being looked up by both county and town staff, and discussions back and forth, and I anticipate that that would be in place. And the counties would like to take it to their board of supervisors for approval in July. So that's pending and where we're at at this particular point.
Questions, anyone?
Mayor, I just have a comment.
Mary?
You know, I'm really happy to see how fast this moved and how much got done. A few weeks ago, we, this room was full of the people that lived there and what they go through. So I'm glad to see the county and us be able to get going on this and come to a resolution quickly.
That comes from, what was nice was, yes, supervisor Brown and supervisor Smith were very engaged to see this happen, and of course, they found dollars within their budget to see it completed. So, yes, it moves very fast when you find a funding source and a will. Pretty easy for us roadway engineers to say, yeah, that's what you need to do. But they did, they did find a funding source to address the need that they heard from the unincorporated residents of Paquito Valley.
Good. Vice Mayor?
Is this the final layout for that road? Seems to me, I heard comment made, that the actual, but the actual road itself later on could move.
That is correct. The existing, as I mentioned, is a private roadway owned by a developer. I understand his interest is continuing to develop the viewpoint subdivision to the north. So to the point, what he does with this particular road, it would take his permission to say, yes, you can improve this roadway on, this private roadway on my property. So that's really the deal point in place. So to the point, the road could very easily move in the future, as he develops out his property and develops lots. To finish out, what I understand is his ownership and what we think is his particular ultimate desire is to complete the subdivision up to the Yavapai County line.
Of course, if it moves, we no longer have to pay to maintain it.
Well, if it moves, he would build the road up, like all subdivisions, to town standard, and by the process here, the plating process, yes, it would be accepted for maintenance then.
Right.
And additional roads that would come off of that particular roadway. Very similar to what you see in the exhibit.
So we basically have nothing to lose by maintaining this road that's being built by the county now.
Part of what we do is maintain roadways once they're built.
Laura?
I just want to comment, this is one of two road issues that came to the head in the last ten days. And entities of governments working together, listening to the citizens, brought about very solid, positive conclusions. And I want to compliment all the parties that are involved, not only in this particular Paquito one, but the Prowah Horn one as well. Because when people come together and sit down and are congenial and all have the right goal, it's amazing what can get done. And so I just want to compliment all of you.
Marty?
Yeah. The fact that we had so many people in the room recently really points out, you know, the need for this and how important it is to the people. And I have gotten feedback from people outside the community. I actually had somebody ask me three times, so tell me, the county's going to build it and you're going to maintain it? I go, yeah. And they asked me again, and I said, yes. And they asked me again, and I said, yes. I said, are you sure now? And he goes, yeah. So I think this is a great thing. You know, as Laura said, the, you know, the mutual agreement between the county and the town of Prescott Valley, and the fact that we're able to work well, you know, so well together, I think that it's going to make this a even better project than what we've anticipated. So thanks again for everybody's work and, you know, what they've done towards this. So thanks again.
Thank you, Marty. Mary, you got a comment?
Oh, no, Mayor.
Mike?
Yeah, I was just curious, looking at the overlay here, does the road go through a creek bed, or is there a bridge required? Or will there be a bridge?
As I mentioned, that is a FEMA-designated floodplain, you see the blue area?
The floodplain area.
So that's when we mentioned that, yes, roadway's basically half the project, but this has been substantial low water crossing in the limits of that particular blue area in order to, so that roadway integrity is not jeopardized due to high flows, and that's what that low water crossing would do. I think one thing I wanted to add, if I could, Mayor, this is on the table for hopeful approval by staff and getting the intergovernmental agreement approved. But if we get it approved to the timeline that we talked about, you know, July or early August, the county fully anticipates to have these improvements complete by September first. So that's the anticipated timeline at this point.
Ivan?
Mr. Mayor, just, you know me, the details are always the thing that I care about, you know?
Yeah, you're the one, Ivan.
The county obviously will not want to put public dollars into a roadway that they don't actually own or that we at least don't own. So to be absolutely clear, we're going to need to go to the property owner and say, you need to now deed that, or we're going to need to do a plat, so that that's a right-of-way that the county then puts the dollars into to build. He'll want the flexibility to move it when he actually goes in and develops it, and that'll end up being through an FDP, a final development plan, or a replat. And we'll have to basically commit that we'll be flexible about letting him move that. He'll then have to pay, of course, to move it. And so, and build it wherever it goes. But you, we do need to understand that unlike the other line, which is still privately owned, the one that goes out to Antelope Meadows, because somebody else built that, put that double chip on there, this will actually need to be public right-of-way, and then it will have to change formally later when the development goes through.
Okay, Mary?
Yeah, and so after, let's just, so, you know, we fix the road, and then down the road, he decides he wants to move the road. So he moves it, and then he has to do all of this work, right, again, that we're going to do now. And then we get the road back.
Larry?
Yeah, the important thing to know, this pavement section or this road that is being built by the county right now is not an asphaltic twenty-year road.
Okay.
This is a chip-seal road that will be dust-free and pothole-free.
Right.
For a period of time that best guessed, three to seven years, by the time the building goes out that far. When the developer for the town of Prescott Valley puts in the real road, the finished road, it's going to have curb gutter, it's going to have a deep pavement section and subgrade underneath it, significantly greater cost than this temporary dirt-free, dust-free road. But you could think of it as a throwaway, because at some point in time, it's going to be thrown away and a real road put in, but it will serve the purposes in the short term.
Well, I do know that what's going on today out there cannot continue, so that's not an option. We do have to do something, so, thank you, Norm.
Ivan, you had another comment? Steve, you had a comment?
Mayor?
Yeah?
It's important to understand, and I wanted to just be clear, the road that's going to be put in, no Prescott Valley tax dollars are being spent on that. It's really critical, everybody understands that. It's the developer and dollars.
Thank you. Any other comments? Anything else, Norm?
No, Mayor, I just leave it at that. If you'd like, we'd like to bring back, when we get the intergovernmental agreement to a better approvable state, we'll bring it back to you.
Is that okay? Everybody approve? Norm? Do it.
Very good, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Norm. Okay, we'll move on to discussion, water resource update. John? You going to go through all three books with us tonight?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council. About once a year, I borrow your time to give a brief update about Prescott Valley's work regarding water resources and our water supply issues, but I also like to take a little bit of time and address the various myths and misinformation about water supplies that permeate our area. So one of the foremost, I think, is, and I brought these documents, this picture here, is that our water supply situation is highly regulated. As a matter of fact, it's the most highly regulated...
Sorry, you got a question, Mike?
I don't.
Okay.
It's the most highly regulated area in the state amongst probably the most highly regulated state in the nation as far as water supplies go. And, you know, there's a stack of documents, these are regulars, there's many more, that are real laws, real regulation, real policy, that direct what we do from day to day as pertains to securing water supplies. Many of these decisions are outside of the hands of local officials like the Prescott Valley Council, such as yourself. So the decisions are, have already been made, they're codified, and we have a regulatory agency called the Arizona Department of Water Resources that keeps track of what we're doing and makes sure that we stay within the law. So some of that law, the groundwater restrictions that came about in 1980 with the Groundwater Management Act, include some of the items that I have listed here. I'll just go over a couple, because these are constant myths or misinformation that I hear from, you know, throughout the area. One is a hundred-year assured water supply, and I'll talk more specifically about this, but every new subdivision is required to demonstrate that they have a hundred-year supply of water. That's a, that's a long time period of water supply. Nobody else has that standard outside of the five active management areas that are shown here on this map. The other issue is that those new subdivisions, they cannot increase draft on the aquifer. They're prohibited by law from increasing... They're prohibited by law from increasing the draft on our aquifer, and they cannot be permitted to grow, to develop, to plat new lots if they do. And that has been the case since 1999. So we have a number of other things that we have to deal with, annual reporting, we have to, we have this state goal of reaching safe yield by year 2025. We overpump our aquifer a little bit. Moving on, just a little bit about our water supplies. We primarily depend on water that is in the aquifer. Big, deep groundwater basin, it's below our feet. A lot of people that are from outside of our area don't really understand that concept. They're used to seeing surface water supplies. Maybe they're from back east where there's surface water everywhere. I've been told that, you know, having been as far east as Denver, I'm not really sure of all those things. But, so they're nervous when they don't see water everywhere. But the fact is, it's only about 500 feet away from where I'm standing now. A huge body of water right below our feet that's carefully managed and metered out so that we don't overuse it too badly. Now, we do take a little bit more than we were supposed to out of it, but that's a condition that's been going on for a long period of time. We use about 2%, I'm sorry, 2/10ths of a percent of the aquifer a year. So we have a long time to really address the situation. There's nothing tragic about the total use that we have, and the Department of Water Resources through the state has declared that we're going to reach safe yield, in other words, stop that, so we won't have any overdraft by year 2025. I think it's very significant to note that water use, groundwater pumping has not increased. As a matter of fact, it's decreased in the past 50 years. So another huge myth that I hear is that, you know, all the growth that we've seen in this area has had a huge impact on our groundwater supplies, but it's, the simple fact is that we used a lot of groundwater back in the 60s, and so that's about as far back as I could retrieve data. And so that large body of groundwater pumping back in the 60s, that was for irrigated agriculture primarily. And because we have this water management regime in place, that water that was formerly used for agriculture was converted and extinguished and is now being used for homes, so that we don't have a net increase in pumping. Talk a little bit about water for growth in Prescott Valley, going back into that 100-year assured water supply requirement, and what is that? So if new subdivisions cannot access groundwater, can't increase the draft of groundwater, where do they get water? And so they can use groundwater rights that are already existing if those water rights are extinguished. Just like I said before, many of the agricultural uses have been extinguished and now we see house stops, or rooftops for houses. Other water supplies that they can use? Other water supplies that are available that are not groundwater supplies in the AMA include effluent, effluent that's been treated and recharged as credits, you're all familiar with that concept, senior surface water rights that are well-proven senior surface water rights. You can't just go and collect water out of a stream unless you have an existing surface water right that dates back usually before territorial days. And big chino water, and I'll talk a little bit about big chino water in a minute. And so the determination of whether a subdivision has a 100-year assured water supply, that's not your determination, and I think people need to understand that. The state agency makes that determination, and before you can approve a subdivision plat, that determination has to have already been made by the state agency. So it's a technical and legal determination by the state agency. It's, I think, important to note that we have not had a new subdivision in Prescott Valley in 17 years. You know, the growth that we have has come on lots that had been platted back in 1999, but nothing since then. So it's been a long time. So again, the groundwater that's in the aquifer is reserved for the current homes and the platted lots, lots that were reserved in those subdivisions that were planted 17 or more years ago. So just talk a little bit about Prescott Valley. I think this is pretty significant. Prescott Valley has been able to basically lower its total water pump in spite of an increase in growth. In fact, we don't pump any more water now than we did back in 2003, even though we've seen an increase in population in our service area of 15,000 to 18,000 people. So I think that's a huge achievement. Much of that success is due to our residents being so conscious about the amount of water they use. So that's, I think, very significant. And this is basically why, this is the water use per person, per day in Prescott Valley.
Yeah. You didn't do anything wrong, John.
Not this time.
If Diane will bail me out, I'll keep going. So, you know, groundwater use per person has significantly declined, down to about 95 or 96 gallons per person per day. So talk just a little bit about the big chino water supply. That's a significant new source of water that we've been working on. The big chino resides up northwest of Paulden, and we had obtained a legal right to withdraw water from that aquifer in order to bring it into this area to reach safe yield and supply water for growth. The big chino project has been basically in the planning stages since the 20s. If you really want to look at it, it's a replacement supply to Central Arizona Project water rights that were granted to the city of Prescott and Yavapai Prescott Indian Tribe from way back. And so we've converted essentially Central Arizona Project water supply, that's the big canal that delivers water to Phoenix and Tucson. We took those allocations, it was impossible for us to physically access the Central Arizona Project Canal down in the valley, but we've conveyed those into a source of supply, a legal source of supply to the big chino. As we've developed further with the big chino project, we went through a series of litigation with Salt River Project, we reached an agreement with Salt River Project to protect the flows of the Upper Verde River. This is an enforceable agreement. It's unlike any other water supply development project in the state's history. So I got it back. Thank you, Glenn, Brian. So again, we've gone through this process to prove our water rights to the big chino sub-basin, and we've agreed that we will not impact the flows of the Verde River. This is an enforceable agreement, it's unlike anything else out there, and I want to point out that no other water users from the big chino sub-basin are regulated, except us and the city of Prescott are partner in the project. So I think it's, I think foolish to think that a groundwater basin that has a huge volume of water overlaying by a large amount of private property will go unused in Arizona. Our use from it will be regulated through an enforceable agreement, but nobody else's is. So I think it's important for people to understand that. So with all of these things in place, I believe that we, Prescott and Prescott Valley, as partners in the big chino and as co-municipal water suppliers in the Prescott AMA, are held to the highest standard of any municipal water provider in the state. And I think people really need to understand that. We have to meet all of the regulatory requirements of the active management areas, but the other active management areas have this huge Central Arizona Project Canal that help them meet their water supply goals. We don't have that. Furthermore, our alternative supplies from the big chino, we have agreed that we will use that water under an enforceable agreement that won't cause any environmental damage. The water users of the Central Arizona Project Canal don't do that. By the time people take water out for the CAP, other irrigation along Colorado River and for water in California, there is no Colorado River remaining. We're going to make sure that the Verde River remains. And finally, my last slide here, just want to talk a little bit about our watershed stewardship and biomass programs. Many of you have been aware of this, took a field trip out to watch a big machine crunching through juniper trees out in the big chino. And this is to deal with the issue that only about 2% of our total precipitation actually reaches our aquifer. The rest of it's consumed by plants. We've had a huge increase of woody vegetation that has invaded former grasslands, that has filled up the inner spaces between trees and normal woodlands, and something needs to be done about it. We used to have a forest products industry in this area, but we never really had a forest products industry that dealt with low-value biomass such as junipers and other brush. We're trying to reinvigorate that, restart the forest products industry on this low-value product, so that private industry will start addressing this overgrowth issue, help us deal with the fire hazard, help us deal with the low infiltration rates that we have on our water supplies. We're working on getting the basic investment-grade data for a potential biomass industry. That includes the biomass market analysis, labor market analysis, that sort of thing, conducting these biomass pilot projects like the pilot project that you saw, it's pictured in the bottom of the slide. And we've been able to address about 1,400 acres so far, which might sound like a lot, but we're talking about, you know, over a million acres of material that needs to be dealt with, so it's a small amount. The 1,400 acres has been dealt with with taxpayer money. You can see how far you can go with taxpayer money, so we really need to have private industry involved. So with that, I just will conclude and offer time for any questions.
You want to entertain a question? Anyone? Mike?
Yeah, just I thought one of the things you mentioned was the fact that no other water users will be required to limit their use, and that's anybody, that's industrial, commercial, private?
That's correct, council member. The big chino is outside of the Prescott Active Management Area, so all the regulatory standards that we have here don't apply there. However, they follow us wherever we go to withdraw water. So even out into the big chino, our property that we, that the city of Prescott owns up there, that will be our well field, all of our regulatory overburden, along with the enforceable agreement with Salt River Project, follows us to that project site. All of our neighbors, though, don't have any regulatory oversight, and I like to call it, it's the law of the biggest pump. So...
Other questions? Laura?
I don't have a question, but I do want to make a strong comment, since I serve on these water groups. Our area, as you understand, hearing John, has very rigid restrictions, but we're an epitome to be emulated for other communities to, and I'm going to use the word, treasure their water in the manner that we do with assistance of our citizens. I think we're pretty much amazing, and I know other communities are so glad they do not have the restrictions we do. But I'm beginning to believe it would be wise for there to be further restrictions outside of the AMA. And the fact that our water usage decreases as our population increases is shocking and a dichotomy that I have to defend a lot. But thankfully, we have all the strong substantiated data to prove the statements that John made. And John, you work so hard, and we are so fortunate to have you in your position with your longtime knowledge, with your expertise. People talk to me all the time about trying to steal you, and I get real cranky when they do that. I've never shared that with you publicly, but I just thought I'd share that with you now.
John, that was a good presentation. You really summarized a very complicated law very well. Very good. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Okay, we move on to number seven, discussion, Volunteer Central update. Heidi, you're up.
Hello. I tried to pay the chief 50 cents back there to do this for me, but he said that wasn't enough. So, I just want to give you a little update on Volunteer Central. I think that the last time I came before you and gave you an update was kind of shortly after I started, so a lot has happened since then, and so we have some good things to report. We continually bring on new volunteers. It's really nice because people want to volunteer for the town of Prescott Valley, so that makes my job a lot easier. I don't ever have to beg. And occasionally, and actually more than occasionally, different staff members from the town of Prescott Valley will come and say, "We could really use some volunteers for specific things." And it's a pleasure to go out and ask people and find out that people are more than willing to share their skills. So our numbers are pretty static right now. We just got off the last banquet, and so we were able to really look at our database. However, we currently have actually more than 250 volunteers, counting our commissions and, you know, because those are all volunteers as well, so our boards and commissions. We've produced two successful volunteer banquets, which have been greatly appreciated by our volunteers, and I just want to really thank the council for supporting that because it has really meant volunteers, they give so much time and, as you all know, just a huge amount of monetary gain to our community. And if we could count that, we would be shocked, I think. And all they really do ask for, and they don't even ask for it, is a little recognition in return. And that banquet really gives us the chance to say a very large thank you to them, so we appreciate your support of that. And during that, we've also given out several, you know, honors for volunteers that have really distinguished themselves, and that has also been really appreciated. We've had two successful volunteer fairs, from which we've brought on several quality volunteers each time, so that works out really well. Something that has recently evolved in the volunteer program is that we've brought on more skilled volunteers who have given their expertise to produce some amazing projects. And you'll remember, well, I'd like to say Capital Projects Coordinator Kim Moon has been one of the staff members that has really bought into the volunteer program, and she's come up with some great projects. And it's not that she's like, "Let's just find some way for volunteers to make themselves useful." These are projects that are really needed in our community, that we wouldn't have the budgeted money to be able to do this. And one was the Parks Asset Mapping Project, which was an extensive undertaking completed by Lisa Wells, as you'll remember, she gave you a presentation last year. And I'd like to tell you that after completing that project, she brought that report with her as part of a job interview at a local engineering firm, and they hired her on the spot. So not only do our volunteers benefit us, but they gain a lot of, she just wanted to update her work experience, and it worked out really well for her. Currently, Kim's working with another skilled volunteer, Paul Roland, who is completing the Public Trails Asset Study Project. And when he inquired about volunteering in February, it became apparent that he was a perfect fit for the next phase of the asset study project, which is focusing specifically on the town's trail systems. And so right away, he began volunteering each week and so far has volunteered more than 100 hours. The asset study is to create a complete and detailed inventory of existing trails, infrastructure, facilities, and amenities, which literally includes everything about the trails. And Paul walks the length of the trail with his wife Anne and his dog Fred while they take down notes and photographs, then he comes back in, does further research, and writes up the information he found. And so once that research is complete, he'll finally... down notes and photographs, then he comes back in, does further research, and writes up the information he found. And so, once that research is complete, he'll finalize a spreadsheet that'll be used to update our maps and records, and he'll write a final report, and we'll come and do a presentation for you as well. And so, the data that he's gathering, organizing, and reviewing is a springboard for such future opportunities as increasing trails tourism, standardizing trails brochures, and identifying easy improvements to existing trails systems. So, his work is just a real useful thing, in the future can be a basis for a master, trail master plan study, and improving emergency responsibilities on our trails. We also have two volunteers now who work with me in Volunteer Central, who help to keep that office open when I'm not there. Sandy Boyer helps to keep up the database and any number of other tasks, including helping with the banquet. And because we have the need to keep the Volunteer Central office open, we've begun to share volunteers, and so Danny Carte-Tuck helps to man Volunteer Central two days a week, and also volunteers with the Parks and Rec Department, and he is researching grants, which is something that just is extremely time-consuming, but he really enjoys, he spends hours and hours doing that, and I think it's going to pay off in the community, so he is working out great in there. Another recent success I want to share with you is the court files purging project, and court supervisor Di Anderson identified this project a couple of years ago, and came and asked me if I could help her find some volunteers for that. And so, without belaboring you, this is pretty amazing, the court had gathered past files into a mountain of 25 file cabinets and more than 150 boxes filled with case files dating back to 1997. In early summer 2014, they got their first volunteer, by 2015, had two to three volunteers working together and learning procedures in order to purge those files. And so, Di said, I just want to read this to you because it was a great testimony to the work of her volunteers, she said, "As a supervisor, I set goals for my staff, and at the urging of my volunteers, I set goals for them as well. We discussed how long it would take them to complete a year, and we developed the projected schedule to accomplish the project within the two to three years we hoped. The volunteers worked to meet that schedule and instead beat it. We hope to be finished with 2005 by January 1st, 2016. Instead, they finished 2011, a full year in advance. Currently, they have finished the project and have developed a system to keep current with purging files in order to abide by the retention as set forth by the Arizona Supreme Court." Now, remember, that was 25 file cabinets and 150 boxes, and so what that means for our town is that the court has benefited so much from the efforts of the volunteers and the tremendous accomplishment, this is from Di, "The court staff were able to concentrate on other projects and deal with those cases brought to our attention with outstanding matters as the volunteers reviewed the files. Our community has benefited as well. Old cases, which would have been purged years ago, now on public access, accurately show purged or completed, and no longer will possibly have a negative effect on someone's background check." So, they've done a wonderful job. The court is now getting ready to transition to a new case management system, and the volunteers will also be helping with that. Additionally, the police VIP program is growing, and one of the volunteers in policing, Jerry Ferguson, who approached us last year, and I believe you met him last week, he was hired as a community service officer, another, Chris Kissling, is a professional photographer who is helping the department with photography needs, and he's also learning fingerprinting. New VIP volunteers also are working in records and assisting with patrol. So, I just want to give a shout out to the volunteer coordinators, because no one person, surely not me, would be able to oversee and schedule more than 200 volunteers, and each department has a coordinator in that department who takes that on. Lynn McNeil in the library is just amazing, she has the most of the volunteers and she schedules them in, and it works out really well. And for this program to be successful, the departments have to be willing to take time to identify meaningful service for the volunteers and to train them, and so I really appreciate these volunteers who are both in the police department, in the library, and in the civic center. Each department takes responsibility, trains those volunteers, and trains them in meaningful work, this is not just busy work, but this is things that really improves the quality of life in our community. And so, I want to thank the council for your support of this program and for your support of our volunteers. So, if you have any questions?
Questions, anyone? Heidi?
No, I just have a quick comment. We would not be able to do a lot of the things we do within this town if it weren't for our volunteers. Their efficiency and productivity, I think, is second to none, and a lot of credit has to be given to you because you're basically the leader of the pack, and I visit you often enough, I see what you guys do down there, and the fact that you initiated the volunteer dinners, huge morale improvement, even though they already had a good morale, it just improves it that much more, and as you said, giving them a little bit of recognition and letting them know that they are greatly appreciated and needed goes a long way. So, thanks again for the work you do, and for the volunteers that are out there watching, it's just incredible as to how much and what you could do for us, so thanks again.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to congratulate you all, so I think when I first came on the council, I didn't know or see or feel any kind of volunteerism going on in the community, and since you've come on, I think we've seen a great deal of organization and impact as a part of the volunteer effort.
Well, thank you.
So, we appreciate that, because it does save the town, I think, funds, and it creates opportunity for citizens also to get involved with what we're doing, so they feel as though they have a part to play as well. So, it has a lot of different benefits, not only just to the town, but I think to the community, so.
Well, I'd like to tell you it was my brilliance that brings this about, but I really have to say, we have a community full of people who are eager to engage in their community and to give back, and honestly, I just bring them in and point them in the right direction, and they just go great guns, so it's a real pleasure to be a part of this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there questions, comments? Heidi, you are doing a super job, and we appreciate that, keep up the good work.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Okay, we have one more item, and that's adjournment, meeting as adjourned. I know Mike hates it.